My name is Melissa Castro. I'm the city commissioner, I think everybody here knows, for the city of Coral Gables. I want to go ahead and I want to thank the vice mayor Rhonda Anderson. She's standing right there in the back. Move your hand around for being here. Thank you very much for being here. Also, I have a special guest. His name is my son. He's right here in the front, Sebastian. Thank you for being here. He's going to be very patient and quiet. This, so let me just go ahead and get started right now. I want to thank every single employee that is here. You guys are the backbone of our city. And I really appreciate you taking the time, especially in this rain, to show up and support me during this town hall. Now, let's go ahead and get started. Okay. Okay, so, well, let's go. Your Millage, Your Money: A Responsible Path to Reduce Taxes Step by Step, by Commissioner Castro. Tonight's purpose: Break down how the millage works, show where your money goes, and present a responsible plan to reduce the milled rate over time. Millage 101. The milled rate determines how much property taxes you pay for every $1,000 of your property's taxable value. Our current milled rate right now is 5.559 mils. Currently, for every $1,000 of your property taxable value, you pay around $5.60 in property taxes to the city. Back there, I have some pamphlets that you can go ahead and take home. So you can, I know there's some formulas, and if you want to go ahead and calculate anything at home, it's a little tutorial, so you could figure out how your taxes, the property taxes, work. Okay? So where does your milled money go? So from all the money you pay in property taxes, Coral Gables stays only with 31 cents out of a dollar. Okay? That's 5.5590 mils. The county, and this is an updated one from last year, because the last year's deferred just a tiny bit. Deick County takes .32 cents out of the tax dollar. The school board, .36 per tax dollar. And I believe last year, the school board was .37. So that's a slim improvement. Regional, 1 cent. Now, I want to go ahead and give a little comparison. We've stayed pretty stable, which is a great thing. We are still, you know, the second lowest milled rate for first, for full-service cities, which is great as well. But the question is, can we improve a little? And I believe we could. The county, if you can see, the county's milled rate reduced just by a little bit from fiscal year 2024 to 2020 and 2025. And then the school board reduced as well from 2024 to 2025. Regional stayed the same. Coral Gables. Now, let me give you an idea of the things that are being paid from the 31 cents or the percentage that you pay to the county or to the school board. For Coral Gables, police, and this is just general, because there's a little more things. I didn't want to give you a whole list of everything that's, it's covering. But this is general. Coral Gables for the 31 cents, police, fire parks, and recreation, public works, code enforcement, and development services. Deick County, 32 cents, public transit, libraries, and health programs. Regional, the 1 cent of the dollar, water management, environmental preservation. School board, .36 cents, public schools, teacher salaries, and academic programs. I hope that was enlightening for some people, that we just pay taxes and we don't know where they're going. What you currently pay now. Now, I want to give you an example. Let's, I went ahead and I chose $800,000 taxable value home, home, a condo, whatever you might call it. In city property taxes, the portion that comes to us from an $800,000 taxable value home is 4,447.20 cents. Now, in combination with all the milled rates that I was giving you, it is $14,549.60. Now, you can see that the portion that comes to Coral Gables is really, it's what, 31 cents? It's, it's, we do a lot with what you give us. And I have to say it, not that I'm biased, but we give excellent services here in Coral Gables. Now, how much did we collect? For fiscal year 2024 to 2025, we collected 129,769,446. For fiscal year 2025 to 2026, that is the estimate. It's 137,357,880. Property values increased by 5.4%. We expect to receive approximately $7,500,000 or more. Property taxes equals 68% of the general fund operating revenue. In other words, the property taxes that are paid by homeowners, 68% are being used, and I'll show you the graph later on, to, to fund, it's funding revenue. The other things are restricted funds, more like the permits and the passports. Now, city services funded by property tax. This is an estimate. Thank you Paula very much for, for working on this. This is not something that she had, but she, that she made for me. So I really appreciate that. So from the money that we pay to the city, this is basically where your money is going. 47% funds public service. 16% public works. 2% economic development. 22% general government. And 13% community recreation, historic, and cultural arts. This is for this year. It's always interesting to know, okay, I'm paying taxes, but what are they covering? So this is a pretty good, a pretty good example of where it's going. So now I want to go ahead and I want to introduce my responsible four-year phase plan. The reductions, the reductions planned are from recurring revenues, not one-time money. So for me to be able to find money that would not affect core services or the quality, quality of services that the city, that the, the city gives our residents, I had to be very strategic to where I'm getting this money from. And then it cannot be one-time money, because then I cannot use it for the next time around. When you lower the milled, you're not only lowering it for that year, but you're lowering it, hopefully forever. I'm going to be hopeful, but forever. Right? It's really hard to lower something and then to bring it back up, because it's, it's, it's not good as a politician or as government, basically. This makes, this makes the plan sustainable year after year. And we're not relying on temporary windfalls. Why is it modest and safe? Designed to be gradual and fair, reducing milled in small, steady steps. It's backed by a 5.4% growth in property values, which offsets the reduction and ensures residency tax relief immediately while the city maintains financial stability. So where are the reductions coming from? And I think that's like one of the most important questions, right? So I did a little, a little bar chart here. New needs budget was 3.8 million requested. We trimmed 162,524. That's about 4%. So if you were here for my last milled town hall, I wanted to specifics what new needs is. And I'll, and I'll do a little tiny recap now. Every year before budget, but budget season, every department has new needs that they need and, and new needs of, for every department practically. And they give it to the city manager, and they give it to Paula and to Diana, and they make a determination of the things that could be budgeted or that cannot be budgeted. Some make it on the list and some don't. Right now, the things that made it on the list were almost 300, 3.8 million dollars. So from that 3.8 million dollars, I went through each line item and I, and I pinpointed which things maybe could decrease a little. And I, and I didn't get that much. It was 4%, 162,000 dollars. And some of the examples were like the drone show. I know the estimate went up, I think it was $65,000. I said, no, we could do probably $50,000. I think that's what we paid this year. So we cut $15,000 there. There was one vacant position for over a year in, in the science shop. That was another $40,000. It has not been filled. That was the only position that I went ahead and I eliminated in this proposal. Because it hasn't been filled for a year, I questioned myself really, what was the necessity for that at this moment? I want to go ahead and introduce our mayor, Vince Lago. Thank you very much for being here. The other thing, renewal replacement programs, we trimmed $180,000 from the, from a total of $6,311,456 cents. I mean, dollars. Renewal replacement program from capital matrices. These are things that we, that we replace, not annually, but we have a schedule of, okay, so every four years, we're going to go ahead and fund roofs or, or mortars or guns or whatever the case is. We went line by line item and said, okay, maybe this one could take one year more. And we fixed that together with Paula. And I was able to go ahead and trim 2.87%. Okay? Milled rate phase plan reduction resolution. So next commission meeting, I think September 10th in two days. Remember, our commission meeting this time is going to be a Thursday, not tomorrow. Oh, Wednesday, sorry, not Thursday. Thank you for that correction. It's going to be Wednesday. I did, I did present a resolution. The resolution is to come into a phased plan to do a small reduction for the next four years of .25 mils. This is what it would look like in year four. Putting it into perspective. Total first year reductions, total $343,000 and almost $400,000. New needs budget, 3.8 million. Our cut is only 162,524. Renewal replacement programs, from 6 million, our cut is only 180,000. The city still invests in what matters while giving residents a phased modest tax break. Now, promises versus reality. The truth about tax cuts. Many candidates and public officials promise tax cuts or milled reductions. But the reality is, something always takes a hit, usually public safety services or infrastructure. My phased approach. This is the only sustainable way to lower the milled responsibly. We're cutting less than 3% or 4% of non-essential requests, not core services. Protects what residents rely on most. Police, fire, sanitation, parks, and strong city services. A plan built on recurring revenues, not one-time money or gimmicks. Final message. If you're going to promise a reduction, this is the only way to do it responsibly. And I'm delivering that plan. Now, I'm open to questions and answers. Anybody have, anybody have any questions?
So I keep getting astounded by your talents in many different ways, but including this way. And I think that you're completely right. I think that, you know, over the two and a half decades that I've been attending City Hall, one of the things that I've found is that there are instances of waste. And we can save money on taxes. And it's a matter of having someone, you know, with your personality, your intelligence, to talk to people and find those ways. And really, what we find, in my opinion, and I'll, I'll end this, because I don't want to pontificate, but that, that the value of the homes keep going up and up and up, which means our taxes keep going up and up and up. And why should that be? And you're saying, okay, let's put a little bit of the brakes on. Our taxes should not actually, in fact, be rising every single year.
So, so while taxes, and, and I want to go ahead and support the city a little bit with this, right? I think we need to find a balanced approach. But at the same time, we need to stay realistic. While property taxes do go up, so does cost of living. And so does union contracts. And so does salaries. We just need to find a balance where we're able to give back to residents at the same time in a very strategic and smart approach. And, and my idea really is a very modest, responsible approach. Yeah. So while property values go up, if your property value goes up, people are also buying new homes. And that's the taxable value that they're paying for their homes, right? So that means cost of living, most of the time, is, it's all going up at the same time. And we need to stay competitive, especially when it comes to salaries, because then we're going to have the issue that we had very, not very long ago. We had almost 40 vacancies in police officers. We need to stay competitive. So as much as I would like to say that we don't have to increase salaries, that's unrealistic. We have a city that we don't sell a product. We sell a service. And who gives that service? All our wonderful employees. And we need to be able to retain those employees, right? That make sense?
No.
No?
Because we're forgetting in this equation, but see, the, the thing that's so astounding is you're the only one pushing for anything in terms of reduction. So where is everybody else on this? I mean, it's incredible to me. It's absolutely, literally incredible. That's why I've been asking Mayor Lago to do what he's been saying for 15 years that he wants to do, which is cut taxes. And now he's saying, no, I can't understand it. But what I feel is that it's not just, whose salaries are most important? I say it's the residents. It's the taxpayers. If their salaries, for instance, are going down during the Great Recession, if they may possibly go down in Trump's tariffs recession, if that happens, I don't think that the city's salaries should go up and up and up, just to say competitive. Competitive with who? They're competing against a residence whom they're taxing.
I, I 100% agree with you, and I think we need to take a balanced approach. I don't think we're there right, right now. But I think that there has been a period in the city where some of our employees did take a tax cut. Not a tax cut, a, a salary cut. So I know we don't want to be in that situation again, but I know the city would be, would do its best job at taking that into consideration. Now, I'm going to go, let's try not to go ahead and mention any elected officials here, because this is my town hall. And I, you guys are going to have an opportunity. This item is going to come up on September 10th, where every elected official is going to be there. And I think that would be the appropriate platform to go ahead and address personal questions to each elected official. Okay? We're good?
Yep.
Perfect. Who else has a question? Felix. Thank you very much, Rep. And if you can go ahead and state your name and your address. Oh, I'm, I'm so sorry. Tom.
No, you go ahead. Absolutely.
Okay. And Paula, Tom Wells is going to go ahead and ask a question, so I probably need your assistance. Come over here.
Thanks, Felix. Okay, so Tom Wells, I live in Coral Gables. In 2024, the highest paid taxpayer for the city was the lifetime living at Gable Station that paid 1.4 million dollars. Okay? So if we give a 1% reduction over four years, they're receiving a much bigger benefit than I am. And so what I'd like you to consider is, as opposed to reducing property taxes, reducing property taxes, continue giving parking benefits and, and reducing permit fees for residents. I know we can't arbitrarily reduce property taxes for certain classes of, of taxpayers in the Gables. But if we could take some of that money and focus it on returning benefits to the residents, that'd be great.
I, I completely agree with you. You know very well, that's where I stood. That's where I stood last year. But after this election, and I know that a lot of the, the candidates that were running were promising a tax reduction, cutting the milled. And I just did not know how to make that happen. So then I really dug into the budget and I said, if this is possible, because it's, it's promises that every elected official almost, I haven't made it, but I'm trying to, to figure it out, basically. If they're promising this, I need to figure out which is the way that this would be able to happen. And I feel that this is the only way without affecting core services and our quality of life. Now, yes, I do believe that we need to incentivize residents in other different types of ways. And I'm going to continue to work on that. So thank you very much, Tom Wells, for bringing that point up.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you for being here.
You bet. One of, one of the questions and concerns I have is that we've experienced in the last three years tremendous inflation of the property evaluation. And now there is a correction. And, and the question is, we don't know how deep of a correction there is going to be. So one of the things, one of the concerns I have is that when you're, you know, reducing the milled rate, it has to be reduced, obviously, in a very small percentage. It can't be a large percentage or following those, those curves. One question I have immediately is, when we look at the overall budget, and it is very difficult, at least for me, to look at the 400-plus page report and, and see specifically that we don't have a breakdown there of the commercial businesses and what they produce and how they produce it as far as tax revenue in, in compensating their effect on the services that are rendered for them in the city. Police, fire, et cetera. So I would like to see more clarity to understand that. Everyone deserves a, a tax break. But the big question becomes, you know, how much of a tax break? And should be, they be compensated the same?
Yeah, so I think that legally, we're not able to go ahead and say, okay, so the commercial, the commercial, and, and, and the city attorney could go ahead and correct me here, but we cannot discriminate, okay, commercial properties are going to pay more taxes or residential properties are going to pay less. I think it's down the, down the board, the same milled rate. Now, please correct me if I'm wrong, city attorney. Okay, that, that is correct. Yeah, we cannot be deciding. That's, we do have a bid that does help sometimes with the, we don't have a bid right now, but we did have a bid in that, that helped with maintaining the businesses. But we cannot be selective with...
The other question I have is, piggytailing on that, is that when you look at the hit that the county is going to take now in their drops, is that going to have a direct impact on things that we depend on from?
You know what? That, when I was seeing all, everything that was happening, that was my first question, I think, was to the city manager and to the city attorney. Was that, did I ask you the same question? No. Okay, okay. So now I'll give you the, the, the microphone in a second. It's not affecting us directly. Now, I said, what about those projects that are ongoing right now? That are county roads? It does not seem, I think you mentioned one to me, city manager, that maybe there's a possibility, because it hasn't been started. And I can't remember exactly. But besides that, I think we are in a good position right now. It's not really going to affect the city. But I'm going to go ahead and give her the, the microphone.
So, good evening. Paula Rodriguez, Assistant Finance Director for the city of Coral Gables. So one of your questions or one of your statements is that in the budget book, you're not able to see what the commercial properties are, contribute as far as property tax revenue. And so it's not delineated in the budget book, but it is part of our budget presentation each year at the first and second hearing. I believe we also provide the information at the July hearings. So just preliminarily, the estimated tax revenue, as the commissioner stated, is $137 million. And of that $137 million, just commercial properties, those are designated as commercial, generate just under $25 million. That doesn't include the multifamily properties and other properties as categorized by the property appraisers office. I'll have another slide with more detail at the, at the first hearing, which will break that out. But about $25 million of the $137 million, and if you count all others, it's another $11 million, which are generally undeveloped properties or things of that nature. So a total of about 26% to 27% of the property taxes are generated, tax revenue is generated by those properties. And from a property count, those properties make up, commercial, specifically, commercial designated properties is about 8.8% of our number of properties. So of the just under 20,000 properties in the city, 8.8% are the commercial properties that generate about, about 20% of the revenue.
Thank you.
Since you're on the topic, I wanted to ask you another question, if you don't mind. And that is that when you're, when you're looking, when you're looking at these amounts of percentages, do we have also the actual cost? For example, these commercial properties provide their own trash service. So they, there's no cost to the city as far as trash, uh, trash collection, because they, they have, they are required to pay a provider directly. But there is police, there is fire, there are roads, et cetera. And I wonder how much those costs are to make sure that, that everybody is pulling their own weight. So the percentage, you know, of the 20-some-odd percent or 25 million, let's say, out of the 138 million of, of the milled rate, that percentage is good, it diversifies it. But my question is, what is the cost of, of those businesses once you deduct the things that they pay for out of their own pocket?
So we don't, we don't necessarily budget in that fashion. What I can tell you is that if you look at the percentage of properties, the commercial properties make up 8% of our total property count. So that, that might give you some indication, but we don't budget in that manner. We could, I'm sure if we, you know, if we broke it down, different departments could tell us where their resources are allocated, but we don't have that breakdown in that, in that regard.
What I also want to add to that is that before these property or commercial properties are, are coming into the city, there is something called impact fees and what that impact that actual business is going to make on the city. And we do have adjustments when it comes to police or when it comes to fire to go ahead and make sure that it is fair.
On the, on the issue of impact fees, I know that the impact fees are collected by the county on behalf of the, of the city. But I, I've asked before, sitting on different boards, how much money do we get back out of those impact fees? For example, when I sat on the Parks and Recreation Board, how much money of the percentage per dollar that goes to the county is returned directly into the boundaries of the city of Coral Gables? And I've never been able to get a straight answer.
Um, she's saying we don't. She's coming right up here. You should probably sit in the front.
So there's two sets of impact fees. There's impact fees that are paid to the county and are dispersed to the city on a, on a request basis. We present projects to them. So I couldn't tell you that percentage that comes back from the county. But there are also impact fees that are charged by the city. So impact fees that we receive. And those impact fees, that legislation has been refined and strengthened over the years. So those are the impact fees that we've been able to put funding towards the purchase of land, towards the enhancements of parks, towards the underlying funding. And so there's various impact fees that the city charges and has received funding for and has funded several projects throughout the years. That information is available in the budget book, and we talk about it generally at the capital budget meeting. But there's two different kinds of impact fees, and we do get a significant amount of, of funding from, from those.
Thank you, Paula. Do you have another question, Mr. Pardo? No?
Commissioner, we have a speaker on Zoom.
Absolutely. What is, please go ahead and tell me your name and address. And thank you. And thank you for zooming in.
We will be calling on Art Deb at this time.
Sorry?
Art Deb is her name. I'm asking her to come in.
Okay, welcome, Art Deb. Whenever you're ready.
I'm asking her to unmute via Zoom. She's not unmuting yet.
If you can, please go ahead and on mute. Right now, we cannot hear you. I'll go ahead and give you another five seconds. And we can go ahead and help the next person, and we'll come back to you if you're having technical difficulties. Okay, do we have another another person on Zoom?
No, ma'am, that's it.
No? Do we have any other people in the public that have any questions? Nope. I would love to hear a question from you, Nicholas.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Absolutely.
Actually, less of a question, just a a point of clarification. Paid very, very close attention to the elections this last season. And I think it's somewhat misleading to state that electeds, that got elected candidates made a promise to cut taxes. In fact, what they campaigned on was a commitment to fiscal responsibility. And I think that that's what they're demonstrating now by maintaining the millage rate moving into the the new fiscal year. So like I said, it's just a point of clarification. It was a commitment for financial, for fiscal responsibility.
I really appreciate your comment. But during next, during the next commission meeting, when this item does come up, I'm gonna go ahead and bring the mailers. Then, number one, Coral Gables first paid for. And number two, that one of the candidates paid for too. And specifically on those mailers, it says, lower the millage and lower taxes specifically. The only way to lower taxes is to lower the millage that is in our control. Now, we're not gonna control property values. That's, property values go down, property taxes go down, right? But right now, within our capabilities is only lowering the millage. So to go ahead and say that we're gonna lower taxes by cutting waste, cutting waste is a wonderful thing at the end of the day. But you're not lowering the millage and you're not cutting taxes. We could maybe fund better services by cutting waste. We could do that, but it's not automatically lowering the millage.
If I may?
Absolutely.
I think that every every fiscal year, we need to take into account a series of circumstances in order to determine if we can, in fact, reduce the millage rate. But a series of occurrences took place last year that if our commission were to reduce the millage rate for this fiscal year, they would be fiscally irresponsible to do so. So I understand that you have these mailers, and that's fine. But holding them to that would be fiscally irresponsible for, like I said, a series of circumstances that took place last year that prevent us from being able to do, to reduce the millage rate this year.
I know, so I really, I really appreciate you staying engaged. But the proposed phase plan that I'm proposing and that I'm proposing right here is a very responsible and modest approach that is not affecting and it's not fiscal responsibility.
Okay, if, could you, is it possible that you could pull up the slide where you outline how much the city will be, I wanna say, it's not a reduction, it's it's really how much less the city would be bringing in if the millage rate were reduced by point twenty five percent?
It would be three hundred and forty three thousand.
Okay, can you pull it up? So, right there. Okay, so we, three hundred and forty three thousand. Again, it's, I don't, I think it's misleading to say it's a reduction because it's not necessarily a reduction. It's just three hundred and forty three thousand, three hundred and ninety four dollars less money that the city would be bringing in if the millage rate were reduced by point twenty five percent. To say it's a reduction is to almost say that that's how much less or it's hard to explain it, but it's it's not really a reduction. But let's do some math, if we may.
So what would you call it if it's not a reduction?
It was three hundred and forty three thousand dollars less than what would be brought in if the millage rate were maintained. But the budget increases based off of the millage rate, regardless of whether it goes up or down. For example, last year, instead of bringing in twelve million dollars, the city would have brought in ten million dollars if the millage rate were reduced by two percent. Don't know the exact numbers. But it's it's misleading to say it's a reduction or a reduction in services by any means. The budget still goes up regardless. And that's the number that we really need to be paying attention to, which I don't think was presented. But I want to do some quick math here. If staff can, if I say this number wrong, but I'd like to remove some numbers from that three hundred and forty three thousand, three hundred and ninety four dollars. The first would be approximately forty thousand dollars that was given to the Actors Playhouse. Okay, so that's forty thousand dollars that was given away to an entity that had the responsibility to do the work themselves. Then we need to take about a couple hundred thousand dollars from the salaries.
Can we go one by one? Can we take one by, can we take one question by one, so I could go ahead and provide you an answer?
Well, I'm I'm giving you the numbers that we need to be subtracting from this to realize that that three hundred and forty three thousand dollars is minuscule compared to the amount of money that was previously spent in the last two years.
So now, when you're saying frivolous, that's that's your opinion, it's not my opinion. Now, the the ramp in the Actors Playhouse is a property of the city. And I think it's an investment to the city that actually came from the, uh, well, the disability, not disability, the accessibility fund directly to fund those type of things. Now, when we consider a reduction, those amounts of money are not monies, those are one-time monies. Those are not monies that we consider. When we consider a reduction, we need to stick with reoccurring monies, revenue. And that wouldn't qualify. Those are one-time expenses. When you lower the millage, it goes year after year. It's not a one-time thing.
But right, but a reduction would mean that that's the money that we had in the first place. That's not money we had in the first place.
That was money that was allocated in a different way to be able to fund things like the ramp.
So, okay, well, so you're saying that three hundred and forty three thousand dollars is money that we have at this moment, that we're not gonna have if we reduce the millage rate by point twenty five percent?
Well, everybody was asking for a millage reduction. Everybody was asking to lower your taxes. I'm trying to deliver on that. Do you have a better way to deliver on that?
I believe that the better way to deliver that on this moment is to take into account the circumstances and the occurrences that took place over the last two years and realize that now is not the time to reduce the millage rate. Last year it was. Unfortunately, money has been spent in frivolous, in a frivolous frivolous manner over the last year that doesn't allow us to reduce the millage rate in the same manner or even by point twenty five percent. In fact, I I remember Mr. Wells saying that he didn't want his taxes to go down by twenty eight dollars. This is perhaps even smaller than that. At that point, what is the point?
Yeah, so the whole point here is to make a plan, not to make open promises, I'm going to lower your taxes. The whole plan here is to go into a plan and show that we are serious about lowering your taxes, to go into a phased approach that does not affect the city. Three hundred and forty three thousand dollars is almost nothing compared to the budget we have. But we're sending a very strong message that we are true to our words, that what we promise, we do.
And I hear you on that. But to stay true to our words by being fiscally irresponsible is not following through on a commitment to be fiscally responsible.
No, I really appreciate your comments. But in my opinion, and with the data that I've shown, this is not being fiscally responsible. Not one bit. This is the most fiscal, responsible, modest and strong way to go ahead and reduce the millage in a phased approach.
Very well, all right. Well, I appreciate you allowing me to speak.
Absolutely, thank you.
We have another speaker on Zoom.
Absolutely. Go ahead, please state your name and address.
My name is Debbie Register. I live at twelve forty Place A this Avenue, Coral Gables, Florida.
Hi, Debbie.
Hi. I know I'm your appointee.
Yes, and I and I know you're not very happy with what I'm proposing either, but.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not.
I know, I know.
I know it. But I'm also was not happy last year when they reduced the garbage fee so much and put us in arrears. I think we need to look at a lot of things that's being suggested or brought up in the commission. You know, to keep our city running. We have deteriorated roads. We have deteriorated sidewalks. It's doesn't seem like anything's getting done because one year to the next, everything deteriorates. So I don't think we've spent stuff frivolously, it's been mentioned. Just think that there's just too much that's happened over long periods of time. It's not just last year, it's not just two years ago. It's been multiple years. And the city's going to have to catch up. And that means that, no, taxes should not go down, nor should garbage go down. And actually, I think garbage should go back up. If we want what we're getting and you want to live in this city, then you pay for it. So I think there's been a lot of things that have been adjusted over the years to try, because people don't want to pay. If we want to live in the city, we have to pay to keep it up. And I see more and more things that are deteriorating. And I could, I'm thinking of bringing, sending you a picture of a friend of mine that wound up in the hospital. And you should have seen his face when he tripped over a sidewalk. He didn't go against the city, but he wound up in the hospital. And he was in his nineties. So there's things that need to be done that aren't being done. And so, no, our board is going to recommend no reduction in the real estate taxes for this year. So, thank you. And I'll be listening to the commission meeting.
Thank you, thank you very much for sharing your thoughts, Debbie. I really, I really do appreciate you. That being said, I do want to let everybody know that if you have any concerns that are happening in your streets or 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 in your neighborhood, now is a perfect time to go ahead and state them because this town hall is right before our budget hearing. And I think all the elected officials would like to hear. Maybe if we could work a little harder or allocate some more funds into different things, help us shape, you know, what your needs are. Because at the end of the day, that's why we're here. We're here to service you the best way possible. And communication really, really does help. Any more questions? Okay, I need a microphone for Mr. Rip Holmes. Oh, right here.
Yeah, I I really appreciate it. And and, you know, it's funny because when we look at the pensions for the city, I I'm trying to remember the exact name that we have, but we have better pensions for the city employees than even the rich people down in Gable by the Sea. And in other words, in, for, last I checked, the city pensions are protected even from like a depression or even from the COVID recession. That this, this, I mean, who do you want to? There there's like two levels of citizenry. There's the people who work for the city that get these incredible guaranteed pensions that nobody else gets versus the citizens. And I think that, you know, one of the things that you're famous for is looking out after the taxpayers. And we should not lose the perspective of what is life like for the taxpayer. Thank you.
Absolutely, I absolutely. And thank, thank you for your comment. I think the city works very hard in trying to be as proficient as possible with our tax dollars. But as elected officials, we can also shape that. And that's why it's so important that we keep open communication with all our residents. I'm going, whether this tax reduction gets approved or not, I will continue to work on resident-friendly programs. So you'll probably be seeing more of that. I know I introduced the resident parking rate discount. It's a pilot, it's been extended to the first week of Jan-, no, the first commission meeting of January. I think it's it's something that we, the probability of it being permanent is very high. Programs like that, I'll continue to advocate and to continue to to bring forward. Any other questions? Yeah, yeah, you need a mic because we have Zoom and I want to be able to have everybody hear your comments. Thank you for being here.
Several things, Maria, Mrs. Maria Cruz, fourteen forty seven Miller Road. Several things came to mind listening. We're talking about fiscal irresponsibility. When we reclassify positions so that some people can get a better salary in the middle of the year, almost at the end of the year, when the new fiscal year comes, they're gonna get an increase based on the new salary that we just reclassified. This is not a one thing, several people. When you look at salaries, there are people at the bottom, the garbage collectors, the people that, the low-paid employees get the same percentage as the high-paid employees. Well, if you're making a hundred and fifty thousand and you get ten percent, that is a big amount. But when you're making minimum, ten percent is nothing. So we have to be very careful. I requested salaries from top to bottom. And you will see a lot of people at the top, not only get a base salary, they get ten percent for this, five percent for that. It's incredible, the amount of stop on top of the salary that the people in the higher positions get. That is wrong. I, for example, found there's, I believe, a five percent for teaching the people in their department how to use one of the new programs.
Ten-four.
Oh, is that what it was?
Ten-four.
Okay. That is a long time ago. How long are we gonna teach them? And why should they be getting the same, the percentage for teaching something that pretty soon is so old that maybe a new program will be coming in? This is the kind of thing that fiscal irresponsibility is. Fiscal irresponsibility is also when we do city buildings, like this building that we're here. Pretty new. We've had to fix the air conditioning. We've had to fix the roof. What happened? A brand-new building? If you go to Development Services, I mean, it was a good penny that we paid for that. And guess what? Repairs, windows that were still water coming in. You know, that is fiscal irresponsibility. And the people that were in charge, let's not talk about Miracle Mile and the tiles that so many of us said were not good. Now we're gonna replace some areas because the tiles haven't worked out. That's fiscal irresponsibility. We need to look at what we do, what we do that we could be saving money. Because you know what? That's what the problem is with the money. Salaries is a big problem. And you need to look at those extra stuff. And if anybody's interested, I have the document. I can send it to you for last year, for twenty twenty-four, all the people. And if you look at the payroll, there are people that have their salary on one line and there's this many more extra, extra, extra percentages for doing what somebody at the top should be doing as part of their salary. Because if you're getting top money, you're expected to do extra stuff. You shouldn't be getting paid for every single thing that you do because that's why you're getting the big money. And that's what the big problem is. And let's not talk about outside counsel, attorneys that we hire to do what we should be able to do in-house. I remember when we had one city attorney. Now we have, I don't know how many, and we have outside counsel. As far as I'm concerned, if we cannot do our own, maybe we should have experts. Instead of hiring attorneys, we should have one that's an expert in, let's say, real estate, one is an expert in labor relations, so that we don't have to pay extra for people to do our legal stuff. And I can think of a whole bunch. Driving here today, driving here today and looking at the old police building, what it looks like now, that we almost gave it away because it couldn't be fixed because it would have cost so much to fix. And when I requested the permits for the new building, we could have fixed that building. Oh, no, we had to give Codina the property for almost pennies. And then we had to build this building that's not as big as that one. So let's not talk about fiscal irresponsibility. We have a lot of fiscal responsibility. Let me tell you, we got this wonderful, this beautiful clock that we have on Miracle Mile that happens to have the right time twice a day. It never has the right time except for twice a day. You don't believe it? Go buy. I have pictures, different times of the day. Guess what? Fiscal responsibility. What about, I mean, how many things do we do just because we want to do and not because we need to do? I, I think the way we do budget, asking the departments for needs is the right way to do it. But needs have to be real needs. And you know my pet peeve, when we buy stuff that we don't need, that is wrong. When we pay ghost employees for work that was not done, that is, and, and I don't know how many of you watched when I talked about the scandals. There are plenty of scandals and more to come. Because we do not do what we need to do of our money. And this is why we said that we shouldn't have stayed, look at our budget because we do unique things. Yeah, we have unique things. We have a lot of money that's been used for things, tax money, property tax money, that shouldn't be used for what is being used. So let's be very careful with the fiscal responsibility. I'm still watch, I'm still waiting to see what charities got the extra money. Okay? Enough said.
Thank, thank you very much for your, for your comments, Maria. And I just want to go ahead and clarify one more time that it was three point eight million dollars that was of new needs. Now, we also have to keep in consideration that that three point eight million was what made the cut. Because in reality, it was a lot more money that was requested. What we said we could budget was three point eight million. And from that three point eight million is where I took that, I think, three point six percent that I thought was a healthy trim to those needs. Do we have any more questions? Okay, that's it. Well, okay, well, this was a quick one. And I really want to thank everybody for coming here. Please stay involved. Please ask questions. I also want to note one more thing. Commissioner Richard Lada was not able to be here today. But if everybody just tells him happy birthday, because today's, today is his birthday. Happy birthday, Richard. Yeah. If you want to sing, go ahead and sing. I don't think he's going to be hearing it though. Hey, to you. Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure he would have made it here. Thank you very much to every city employee that is here, for the residents that were here. If you have any questions, please go ahead and approach me privately. I'd be more than happy to talk to you. Have a great day. Have a great evening.